Good evening, everyone. Welcome. If everyone could please take their seats. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Welcome to the annual reorganization meeting of the Sussex County Board of Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. We're meeting at the Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center, 1 College Hill Road, Newton, New Jersey. I want to welcome Father Philip Michael Tangora—I apologize if I mispronounced your name—pastor of Our Lady Queen of Peace in Frankfurt for the invocation and moment of silent prayer. If you could step up to the podium, please.
In the name of the Father and the Son of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus Christ, as we begin this new year here in Sussex County, New Jersey, we ask your blessings of wisdom, of grace, of justice, and of truth to guide all of those charged by you and by the people of this county with the governance thereof. And we ask you in a very special way that through the work of the commissioners and all those tasked with the governance of this county, that true progress, especially for the advancement of our future children, the children currently receiving wonderful educations in our schools, and all of the—those who are suffering in any difficult situation, that they might be helped in order to prosper. And we ask your blessings upon each and every single one of us in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
For the record, the following commissioners are present for this evening: Commissioner Carney, Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner-elect Hayden, Commissioner Space, and Commissioner Yardley. I now invite everyone to stand and join in the salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by email on December 28th, 2022, as per authorization of the Board and per notice which was posted and emailed from the administrative offices of the County of Sussex, located in the Administrative Center, 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald, The Star Ledger, WNNJ Radio, and WSUS Radio. And is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. I ask everyone at this time to please mute all devices. I, at this time, invite Jeffrey Parrott, County Clerk, to come to the podium to read the determination statement from the November 2nd, 2022 election.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for everybody showing up tonight. We greatly appreciate it on behalf of the county. I will now read the statement of determination. The statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to the election held in the County of Sussex and State of New Jersey for the election of certain officers for the county on the 8th day of November 2022. The said Board does determine that at said election the following officers were duly elected. Number 1, Michael F. Strata, County Sheriff, 3-year term. Number 2, Jill M. Space, County Commissioner, 3-year term. Number 3, Mr. William J. Hayden, County Commissioner, 3-year term. Were duly elected to the U. office and for the term above set forth. I do hereby certify that foregoing is true, full and correct statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers therein mentioned and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand this 21st day of November 2022. Jeffrey M. Parrott, County Clerk, Catherine Matson, Chairperson, Board of County Canvassers. I, Jeffrey Parrott, County Clerk of the County of Sussex, do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true, full, and correct copy of the statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county or regional district thereof on the date herein noted for certain officers, and the certificate thereto append as fully and entirely as the same remains on file in my office. Jeff Parrott, County Clerk.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to invite Commissioner Jill Space to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners by Assemblyman Hal Wirths for a 3-year term, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025.
If I need my glasses or not, let me check. I got my Walmart specials out, but it's—I'm gonna go slow. Yeah, I know that's my one fault in the few years I've been in politics, a little speaking too quickly, but it's an honor being here for Jill, who I've known most of her life, and Parker and the whole family. And usually in politics, I'm sworn out—sworn act, so now at least I get to swear somebody in, which is nice being on the other side. But without any further ado, and one of the greatest jobs on earth, and it'll always be a freehold to me, is being a commissioner. And Jill, I know you're gonna do a fantastic job, so I'll—I'll go slow. I, Jill M. Space, do solemnly swear:
I, Jill M. Space, do solemnly swear:
That I will support the Constitution of the United States:
That I will support the Constitution of the United States: Board of County Commissioners by Senator Stephen Ohrho for a 3-year term, said term
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey:
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey: to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025.
And that I will bear true faith:
And that I will bear true faith:
You gotta—you gotta—you gonna hold the Bible?
And allegiance to the same:
And allegiance to the same:
And to—and to the government established in the United States:
And to the government established in the United States:
And in this state:
And in this state:
Under the authority of the people:
Under the authority of the people:
And I will faithfully and justfully perform:
And I will faithfully and justfully perform:
Could you just say a few words, if I may, before we do this?
All the duties of the office:
All the duties of the office:
Commissioner of Sussex County Board of County—or Commissioner of Sussex County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner of Sussex County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, and it's for the 3-year term, and I gotta get used to that commissioner term after being a freeholder for 10 years, but it's a true honor, and my colleague here,
As Assemblyman Hal Wirths is talking about it, it's a true honor, and on behalf of
Assemblyman Space, standing next to him, and you couldn't have a finer family.
Assemblyman Parker Space and Assemblyman Hal Wirths, wish everybody a Happy New Year.
So congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you for asking.
And it's really a particular honor in elected office to get to swear people in for office where they've been elected by the people of their—whether it be the state, whether it be the—the district, or the county, or the municipality. So thank you very much, Bill, for allowing me this honor. So left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William Hayden.
Do solemnly swear:
Do solemnly swear.
That I will:
That I will.
Support:
Support.
The Constitution:
The Constitution.
Of the United States:
Of the United States.
And the Constitution:
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey:
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will:
I will.
Bear true faith:
Bear true faith.
And allegiance:
And allegiance.
To the same:
To the same.
And to the governments:
To the governments.
Established:
Established.
In the United States:
In the United States.
And in this state:
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people:
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully:
And I will faithfully.
And justly:
And justly.
Perform all duties:
Perform all duties.
Of the office:
Of the office.
Commissioner:
Commissioner.
Sussex County Board of County Commissioners:
Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
To fulfill a 3-year term:
To fulfill a 3-year term.
Said term:
Said term.
To expire:
Expire.
December 31st, 2025.
December 31st, 2025.
To which I have been:
To which I have been.
Elected:
Elected.
According to the best of my ability:
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God:
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, next I invite Sheriff Michael Strata to be sworn in as County Sheriff by Senator Stephen Ohrho for a 3-year term, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025.
All right. I state your name.
I, Michael F. Strata.
Let's get the right one here. Do solemnly swear:
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support:
That I will support.
The Constitution:
The Constitution.
Of the United States:
Of the United States.
And the Constitution:
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey:
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will:
And that I will.
Bear true faith:
Bear true faith.
And allegiance:
And allegiance.
To the same:
To the same.
And to the governments:
And to the governments.
Established:
Established.
In the United States:
In the United States.
And in this state:
And in this state.
Under the authority:
Under the authority.
Of the people:
Of the people.
And I will faithfully:
And I will faithfully.
And justly:
And justly.
Perform:
Perform.
All the duties:
All the duties.
Of the office:
Of the office.
Of Director:
Of Director.
Sussex County Board:
Sussex County Board.
Of County Commissioners:
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill:
To fulfill.
A 1-year:
A 1-year.
Term.
Term.
Said term:
Said term.
To expire:
To expire.
December 31st, 2023.
December 31st, 2023.
To which:
To which.
I have been:
I have been.
Appointed:
Appointed.
According to the best of my ability:
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God:
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, next on our agenda is our resolution appointing the Director of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023. Is there a nomination for Director for the County Commissioners?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Chris Carney as Director.
Do I have any other names for Director? Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Commissioner Chris Carney as Director?
A second.
A second? Okay. Do I have a—a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Director Carney, please step forward.
Thank you.
And County Clerk Jeff Parrott is going to administer the oath.
Congratulations.
Okay, where were you? Strata. How you doing? Doing good? Please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, please. You're gonna repeat after me. I, Chris Carney:
I, Chris Carney.
Do solemnly swear:
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support:
That I will support.
The Constitution:
The Constitution.
Of the United States:
Of the United States.
And the Constitution:
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey:
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will:
And that I will.
Bear true faith:
Bear true faith.
And allegiance:
And allegiance.
To the same:
To the same.
And to the governments:
And to the governments.
Established:
Established.
In the United States:
In the United States.
And in this state:
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people:
Under the authority.
And I will faithfully:
And I will faithfully.
And justly:
And justly.
Perform all duties:
Perform all duties.
Of the office:
Of the office.
Commissioner:
Commissioner.
Sussex County Board of County Commissioners:
Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
To fulfill a 3-year term:
To fulfill a 3-year term.
Said term:
Said term.
To expire:
To expire.
December 31st, 2025.
December 31st, 2025.
To which I have been:
To which I have been.
Elected:
Elected.
According to the best of my ability:
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God:
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is our resolution appointing the Director of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2023. Is there a nomination for Director for the County Commissioners?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Chris Carney as Director.
Do I have any other names for Director? Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Commissioner Chris Carney as Director?
A second.
A second? Okay. Do I have a—a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Commissioner Space.
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Yardley. And County Clerk Jeff Parrott will be administering the oath to our Deputy Director and his companion Baxter.
Congratulations. I'm gonna ask you to place your left hand on the Bible, please. Place your left hand on the Bible. Other left hand. And you're gonna raise—you're gonna raise your right hand for me? Okay. You're gonna repeat after me, please. I, Herb Yardley:
I, Herb Yardley.
Do solemnly swear:
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support:
That I will support.
The Constitution:
The Constitution.
Of the United States:
Of the United States.
And the Constitution:
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey:
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will:
And that I will.
Bear true faith:
Bear true faith.
And allegiance:
And allegiance.
To the same:
To the same.
And to the governments:
And to the governments.
Established:
Established.
In the United States:
In the United States.
And in this state:
And in this state.
Under the authority:
Under the authority.
Of the people:
Of the people.
And I will faithfully:
And I will faithfully.
And justly:
And justly.
Perform:
Perform.
All the duties:
All the duties.
Of the office:
Of the office.
Of Director:
Of Director.
Sussex County Board:
Sussex County Board.
Of County Commissioners:
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill:
To fulfill.
A 1-year:
A 1-year.
Term.
Term.
Said term:
Said term.
To expire:
To expire.
December 31st, 2023.
December 31st, 2023.
To which:
To which.
I have been:
I have been.
Appointed:
Appointed.
According:
According.
To the best of my ability:
To the best of my ability.
So help me God:
So help me God.
Congratulations, Chris. Okay, you're gonna sign, and just print your name underneath that. Print my name? We're gonna have—bring this over to Christine, and she can—she can put that down. Okay, and the next one? Okay, we have—you wanna do her? Yeah, okay, I'll come back up, no problem.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming. All right, moving on, we need a deputy director. Can I get a nomination for deputy director? A motion, please.
I'd like to nominate Herb Yardley.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Yardley.
And County Clerk Jeff Parrott will be administering the oath to our Deputy Director and his companion Baxter.
Congratulations. I'm gonna ask you to place your left hand on the Bible, please. Place your left hand on the Bible. Other left hand. And you're gonna raise—you're gonna raise your right hand for me? Okay. You're gonna repeat after me, please. I, Herb Yardley:
I, Herb Yardley.
Do solemnly swear:
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support:
That I will support.
The Constitution:
The Constitution.
Of the United States:
Of the United States.
And the Constitution:
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey:
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear:
And that I will bear.
True faith:
True faith.
And allegiance:
And allegiance.
To the same:
To the same.
And to the governments:
And to the governments.
Established:
Established.
In the United States:
In the United States.
And in this state:
And in this state.
Under the authority:
Under the authority.
Of the people:
Of the people.
And:
And.
I will faithfully:
I will faithfully.
And justly:
And justly.
Perform:
Perform.
All the duties:
All the duties.
Of the office:
Of the office.
Of:
Of.
Deputy Director:
Deputy Director.
Sussex County Board:
Sussex County Board.
Of County Commissioners:
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill a 1-year term:
To fulfill a 1-year term.
Said term:
Said term.
To expire:
To expire.
December 31st,
December 31st,
2023.
2023.
To which:
To which.
I have been:
I have been.
Appointed:
Appointed.
According:
According.
To the best of my ability:
To the best of my ability.
So help me God:
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, Herb. You're gonna bring this back. Okay, Herb, you're gonna have— fill that in, and then you're gonna sign that. You can give it—you can give it to Chris. Okay? You ready?
Congratulations. Congratulations, Commissioner Yardley. Moving on, number 11 is approval of agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Space, second. Commissioner Fantasia, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Carry. Number 12 is recognition of dignitaries in our commissary remarks. I'm gonna start with dignitaries. I hope I don't miss anybody. I think we got them all. If I do, I apologize in advance. State Republican Leader, Senator District 24, Steve Ohrho; Assemblymen District 24, Parker Space and Hal Wirths; our Sheriff, Mike Strata; our surrogate, Gary Chisano; our administrator, Ron Tappin; our prosecutor, Henry Taggart; our Sussex County Republican Chair, Jerry Scanlon; our Sussex State Republican Committee and Sussex YR President, Nick DiAgostino; former State Republican Chairman, War County Chair—County Chairman and current Senator, Doug Steinhardt, which we just lost; former Freeholder Jonathan Rose; former Bogota Mayor, Steve Lonigan; Sussex County Republican Committee First Vice Chair, Kellyanne Hart; Sussex County Republican Committee Executive Director, Josh Akins; Byram Township Council, Harvey Rosen; Frankfurt Township Committee Man, Mayor, actually, Dave Silverthorne; Pacon Borough Council, Ryan Smith; and my addition, Mayor Mike Ginnemore, that I did see. Again, I hope I didn't miss anybody.
Clerk Jeff Parrott?
My—my guy. He's gonna want his money back. I apologize, Jeff. All right, so we have commissioners' remarks, and we're gonna start with Commissioner Space.
No, thank you. Hello, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight for the Commissioner reorg meeting. Thank you to Assemblyman Hal Wirths, my husband's counterpart in Trenton, for swearing me in tonight. Thank you to my family for being here and always supporting me. To my husband, Parker, I could never have a better mentor in politics and in life. I look forward to celebrating 30 years of marriage with you on Monday. Thank you to my parents for flying up from Florida yesterday, and today we were—my family was privileged to attend the Essex County Police Academy graduation in Newark, where my niece Morgan graduated as the commanding officer and will begin her career as a Morris Town Police Officer. Also, tomorrow, we will be in Wantage Township to watch my son, Hunter, get sworn in as a deputy fire chief, and he is the fourth generation in the Space family to serve in that position.
All right, so we have Commissioners' remarks and we're gonna start with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. Hello, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight for the Commissioner reorg meeting. Thank you to Assemblyman Hal Wirths, my husband's counterpart in Trenton, for swearing me in tonight. Thank you to my family for being here and always supporting me. To my husband, Parker, I could never have a better mentor in politics and in life. I look forward to celebrating thirty years of marriage with you on Monday. Thank you to my parents for flying up from Florida yesterday. And today we were, my family was privileged to attend the Essex County Police Academy graduation in Newark, where my niece Morgan graduated as the commanding officer and will begin her career as a Moorestown Police Officer. Also tomorrow, we will be in Wantage Township to watch my son Hunter get sworn in as a Deputy Fire Chief, and he is the fourth generation in the Space family to serve in that position. And I will always back the blue and support our first responders. Thank you to the voters for putting their trust and faith in me to serve on the County Board of Commissioners for the next three years. It was an honor to serve out the remainder of Sylvia Patillo's term in the last eight months. I look forward to twenty twenty-three. I have a few goals I would like to see through. I look forward to continuing to serve on the Budget Committee with Director Carney. As we all know, this year will be an extremely challenging economic year. We will be forced to make tough cuts while keeping our services in the county at the high level we have come to expect. We have been taking a comprehensive look at our twenty twenty-three budget since October. Many cuts will need to be made to keep Sussex County affordable. We need to look out for our county employees, who without them, we couldn't provide all these fine services. We need to remember the taxpayers every, every time we approve anything. I know we need to work hard to keep our county buildings from falling into disrepair and maintain the infrastructure of our county. I also plan it, plan on having an open line of communication with all our county employees. They need to know we are here for them and they should be able to easily approach us with any concerns they may have. They are truly the backbone of our county government. Another goal is working with Commissioner Fantasia and this board in dispersing the remainder of the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds the county received. There are certain guidelines on how and what we can use it on. The twenty twenty-two board most recently has rolled out a grant where our local businesses and nonprofits can apply for up to fifteen thousand dollars. I know how challenging the pandemic was to our small business community and our nonprofits. Hopefully, they will take advantage of it. As we know, each Commissioner is appointed to be the liaison for some of the county's many different departments. I take each appointment extremely seriously. My goal is to work with each department to provide the best service to the community and at the same time, doing it as cost-effective as possible. Many of my days are spent with Commissioner Yardley, attending numerous daytime events with our seniors and veterans. I welcome Commissioner Hayden to the board and look forward to serving alongside him. In closing, I've always believed that elected people need to be accessible to their constituents. I'm always a phone call or email away, where you can stop at the zoo to discuss any concerns that may arise. Thank you and have a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Next, we'll have Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. Greetings and welcome. I would like to also thank some special people here tonight. First, thank you to the District Twenty-four Legislative Team of Senator Orojo and Assemblyman Worth and Assemblyman Space, who never skip a beat in demanding resources for our district. And for Sheriff Strata, who heads the Office of Emergency Management, which ensures an immediate response to protect the public. Congratulations on your reelection. County Clerk Jeff Parrott, who continues to masterfully navigate evolving mandates for the elections. And County Surrogate Gary Chisano, who continues to maintain consistent services in the wake of a health crisis. We appreciate and recognize the hard work put forth by our department heads, and I see you back there. Hello, thank you for being here tonight. They are our hardened soul, and our county employees are adaptable and they're hardworking and they're kind, and they always put the needs of our residents first. I'd like to thank Ron Tappin, our new Administrator, who is accessible to us twenty-four-seven. There you are, Ron, I was looking that way. You're over there. And to meet the goals set forth by the board. And to our Attorney Doug Steinhardt, who was, who had to step out, whose principal legal guidance has been invaluable this year to this board. Our CFO, Elka Yetter, who keeps us appraised and up to the minute on any and all opportunities to increase savings to the county and to maintain fiscal responsibility. And thank you to Christina Marks, whose organization and communication skills are truly unparalleled. Christine Florio, I want to give you a special shout-out in the absence of Carol Novrat. You have become our go-to for Health and Human Services, and we appreciate your consistent communication with the board. And to the Sussex GOP, Jerry Scanlon, the Chair, and Kellyanne Hart, Vice Chair, who support us and ensure our message and our core values do reach the voters. And last, thank you to you, the voters of Sussex County, who have entrusted this team on this stage to serve you. Now, in the past, I have referenced Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, which guides our priorities as we again establish our goals tonight. And we again agree on a guiding principle, differentiating needs versus wants, in order to promote affordability while providing comprehensive services to the county residents. So I'd like to lay out a few goals for the board that I take personally myself. Fiscal Responsibility. The twenty twenty-two county budget represented an overall tax rate decrease and maintained capital, capital improvement funding and continued debt service funding. The county has not wavered from our ten-year debt reduction plan, first instituted in twenty twenty, even in the face of crippling cuts from the Murphy Administration. Our county's ratable base has grown from seventeen point seven billion in twenty twenty to nineteen point one billion in twenty twenty-two, with nearly half a million in new construction tax revenue. And this is very helpful in the face of obscenely spiking health insurance rates. With the receipt of American Rescue Plan funding, and as Jill mentioned, we have instituted a two-million-dollar program for small business grants. We also were one of the few counties in the state to offer hazard pay for our county workers to the tune of nearly four million dollars. They worked tirelessly through the throes of the pandemic and ensured all county departments were well-equipped and serving the public. We will continue in good faith to deliver high levels of critical services to our residents, and we will continue in good faith to support our county workers with investments in our employees, dedicating resources to improve road crew staffing levels, with improvements enhancing safety and security for the county college and county facilities. Growth that prioritizes safety and critical services will remain this board's focus. Number two, clear and concise communication between the county, the municipalities, and the public. Currently, the county uses public notices, newspaper, print, and digital media, including its webpage and social media, to communicate with the public. Again, this will be increased with more frequent updates to ensure timely messages are going out to the public. We will continue to develop enhanced communication protocol with the public and the media. Number three, service upgrades. We continue to support health services for all, for men, for women, for children, for the economically disadvantaged, including no-cost health screenings and clinics. This board has strengthened health and social services by expanding medical transportation for senior citizens, enhancing mosquito control capabilities in the wake of serious illness present here in Sussex County due to mosquitoes, implementing new community outreach programs, and providing programs alongside the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce to bring new consumers to this county. Additional funding directed towards the Division of Health and Human Services for additional personnel and programs must be a critical focus this year in order to support both mental health and addiction recovery programs in the wake of the pandemic. Effective programs that are directly tailored to our community needs are paramount to our health and well-being. And finally, number four, supporting our District Twenty-four legislators as they tirelessly push at the state level for our needs in this often-forgotten corner of northwestern New Jersey. And in that spirit, this past year, I had the pleasure of acting as board liaison to District Twenty-four, sharing at our monthly meetings the updates from Trenton that directly affected Sussex County. Now, there are state issues outside of the direct control of this board, but it's our duty to be mindful of any and all legislation that's going to impact you, is going to increase your cost of living, and is going to infringe upon your rights. Often, it's the decisions made in Trenton that deal us the largest blows. Make no mistake, the board and District Twenty-four legislators who represent us are keenly aware that your rights are essential. As such, never ever tell me the odds in the face of inexplicable, unconstitutional mandates from progressive Trenton Democrats under the Murphy Administration. We were told there would be no bear hunt in New Jersey. There would be no cull of an exploding bear population that was causing extensive property damage, killing our livestock, pets, and attacking humans. We were told to give up. We were told there would not be concealed carry in the state of New Jersey. We were told to give up. In the early days of the pandemic, we were told that state parks would remain closed. We were told to give up. We were told to walk away from our multiple public records requests to the state regarding the disgusting debacle at Andover Subacute. And to refresh your memory, beginning in March of twenty twenty, county officials received a steady stream of reports of egregious violations from employees, family members, and residents of that facility. Sussex County repeatedly alerted state and federal officials about critical needs within that facility that required immediate action, and our words fell on deaf ears. We moved forward in our pursuit of demanding information regarding the tragedy at Andover Subacute, all of the documents related to those incidents. We will never stand by idly, while an inadequate and tepid state response is the direct contributing factor to harm our residents. We did not walk away, and in fact, posed that very question to you, the voters, who overwhelmingly backed our efforts and gave us the green light to pursue legal action against the state of New Jersey for their egregious actions. We did not give up. We are currently in active litigation against the state, and this board will continue to fight to do what is good and right, to demand accountability from the state, the Department of Health, and to protect each and every one of you. We did not give up. Our voices formed a chorus, and the needle moved, and the needle will continue to move. We now see parental rights being stripped away. We now see medical freedom being challenged, now more than ever. Don't give up. Be loud about what matters to you. Our overarching goal is to keep Sussex County safe, affordable, and moving forward. We must continue to demand fair funding and accountability from the Murphy Administration, working in conjunction with our District Twenty-four legislators to ensure we meet our obligations to you. Each and every one of you matter, and we are loud about what matters, and never tell us the odds because we don't give up. I thank you for being here with us tonight, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. We'll move on to our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Hayden.
Thank you, Director. First off, I would like to thank you all for attending. It's an honor and privilege to serve you. I'd like to thank my wife, family, and extended family for coming, Senator Orojo for swearing me in. As to what William Hayden as Commissioner will be like, it's simple. I'm a passionate defender of the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. I believe in limited government and will always protect and defend individual liberties, freedom of thought, and free market value, free market economics. I ran on certain reforms, revenue and spending portal for the county, contract review committee, creating a long-promised ethics committee, an open records review board so that we don't get caught up in litigation on Oprah requests, monthly Zoom meetings so that taxpayers can talk to at least two of the Commissioners, and I'd like to also get us to register the lobbyists in the county so we're in line with state and federal. Workplace efficiency and controlling spending and debt is the only way to cut property taxes, something we all face. As County Clerk Jeff Parrott has often said, Sussex County needs to do more with less. Essential to this is keeping the non-aversarial relationship with the county employees. Jeff has shown the way, as Sheriff Mike Strata has, as surrogate Gary Chisano has. We need to follow that lead. Supporting and retaining experienced workers must be a priority. It means to pay them, pay them in line with the values so they did not leave for more lucrative employment. That almost, that also means finding places to cut so that the increases employee pay doesn't mean increase in property taxes. My priorities will be to ask questions and find places, places to cut, and then to insist that we cut so we can retain those experienced workers who provide the services to the taxpayers, like snow removal, picking up the phone, transit, all while keeping property taxes down. Nobody said more with less would be easy, but Jeff has done it, Mike has done it, Gary has done it. And while we're at it, there's some old business to attend to. The county never got to the bottom of the solar issue. Despite a good start by Jonathan Rose and Carl Lozaro, it's still unresolved, it's still something that has cost taxpayers money. And as others have said, we also have to deal with the hundreds of people in the county that died as a result of Executive One, Order One oh three from the governor. We can't look to the Attorney General, he also signed that order. So we have to take care of it. We owe the families and the victims. I want to thank you for your faith in me, and I'll look to earn it every day in my term as your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayden. Up next is Deputy Director Yardley.
Thank you. Happy New Year. I didn't get a chance to see any of you over the New Years, and I just wanted to say Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome everyone for coming tonight, and a special thanks to my wife, who puts up with me, my friends that are here, and all of the residents that showed up, and thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations to our newest Commissioner, Bill Hayden. I look forward to looking with, working with you. Twenty twenty was a difficult year, coming out of the pandemic. Yet I'm proud at all, that, all, that we have been able to accomplish in twenty-two, most notably the ability to provide COVID compensation for our hard-working county employees. Over six hundred-plus employees are the true backbone of the county, and all who are there, front lines, continued our operations at the county. As I travel around the county, I see a new revitalization of residents and regeneration of energy. I especially enjoyed many of the senior events and veteran services that I attended and had an opportunity to talk to many residents and friends. There's a resurgence in our county and municipalities as we get back to normalcy. I'd like to take an opportunity again to welcome home our new Administrator, Ron Tappin. He hit the ground running this past September and has been working hard to streamline our government. I look forward to continue working directly with him on behalf of the residents. There are many new tasks that face us in twenty twenty-three. We're facing the loss of employees as salaries become more competitive, new regulations out of Trenton that will have impacts on our municipalities and our businesses. This year, the county was presented with We Value Our Veterans Award. The ceremony was held in November eleventh at the Veterans War Memorial in Homedale. The award given, was given to counties and municipalities that provide service to veterans as outlined in the award. This award is not just for the county. It's for all of the groups that provide services throughout the county. Congratulations to all of them. Sussex County was one of three counties that qualified. We were fortunate to receive grant funding as well as smart budgeting to expand the county bus program that we have. We'll be receiving a total of eleven new buses from last year to this year, with five new ones coming in this year. And that's for our transit system. We face many challenges as we continue to have problems with trucks that rust as a result of being unable to wash them down. This is an issue that needs to be resolved this year, which should be able to save us a lot of money, truck replacements, and safety issues. I'm also, also eagerly looking forward to working with my fellow colleagues on the board to continue to work hard for you, the residents, and the taxpayers of Sussex County, reviewing county operations and working on the budget to provide the best for our community and remaining fiscal response, fiscally responsible. We continue to follow our debt reduction program. We know that the last two years have been difficult for all. First, the pandemic, and now the rising cost of inflation and supply shortages. As well, as always, I am committed to doing whatever can be done to assist everyone through these trying times. Please continue to reach out to me, as many of you do, your thoughts and ideas. Our county has a lot to offer, and as a longtime resident of Sussex County, I am proud of our county. I'm proud to be representing Sussex County as a Commissioner, and I look forward to continuing to provide service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Before I start my speech, I just, listening to everybody speak, you know, some, some of the things that we've been saying is they're a little redundant, but it's, it's not, it's not anything but, this is what we care about. So if you hear about our county employees or our constitutional office or D twenty-four, it's, it's because we care and it's important to us. We didn't, you know, collaborate on what we were all saying, maybe to keep it down to, you know, five minutes or less, but that's about it. So I would like to start off with thanking my family for being here and always showing support for me. I first want to express how humbled, happy, and excited I am to be entrusted as this board's director for twenty twenty-three. Next, I want to thank, take this opportunity to highlight all the county's accomplishments in twenty twenty-two. The board welcomed Commissioner Jill Space, who jumped right in and has successfully filled the large shoes left by Commissioner Patillo. We have a new county council guiding us, as well as a new Administrator, Ron Tappin, along with one of the best decisions the board made in hiring a confidential aide, or I'd like to call a chief of staff. Having a chief of staff has provided a daily in-house presence for the Commissioner Board, working hand-in-hand with the county's Administrator and CFO to make sure the objectives of this board are met. In addition, despite the difficulties brought on COVID-nineteen pandemic, the county's bond rating remained A plus plus, and the county's debt reduction plan remains unchanged. The county is paying more as we go instead of borrowing. Throughout the past year, the county worked tirelessly to set up a small-business mini-grant program that went live this December sixth. With these mini-grants, the county is able to give much-needed additional assistance to the county's struggling small businesses. The Commissioner Board is grateful for the dedicated staff of the county who ensures services are provided to the taxpayers day in and day out. We are thankful to have been one of the few public entities to provide hazard pay to our staff for working tirelessly and with risk during the entire pandemic. Going forward in twenty twenty-three, this board remains dedicated to our staff and making county a great place to work. I personally plan on continuing what I have done since I became a Commissioner, visiting county work areas, speaking directly with our staff, and making sure their words are heard, as well as fielding calls and emails from county residents regarding various issues. This board has and will continue to have an open-door policy for staff and residents. On behalf of the board, I want to also thank Senator Steve Orojo, Assemblyman Hal Wirths, and Assemblyman Parker Space, as well as County Clerk Jeff Parrott, Surrogate Gary Chisano, and Sheriff Mike Strata for the continuous support. Most of these individuals have held a position of freeholder, AKA Commissioner, and understand this position. They have always made themselves available to the board, and we are grateful for their guidance. As Commissioners, we take a lot of heat and sometimes even criticism from members of our own party, and that's okay. Not everyone understands the duties and responsibilities of the county Commissioner. It is the county Commissioner Board's responsibility to make sure we are always looking out for our residents and do our absolute best, even making tough choices to keep the county affordable by providing the best services. My plan for twenty twenty-three is to develop better connections with our employees, more meetings with our administrators, and bring back, bring back open forums with the county's mayors and county and council presidents to discuss issues and accompaniment, accomplishments throughout the county. I would also like to see enhancements to the county's website, as well as bringing back the county's monthly newsletter to keep our residents informed. This past year, this board began implementing changes and cuts to county operations that did not impact services provided to, to the taxpayers. I look forward, as director, to continue operational reviews to cut where there is waste. With inflation the way it is, along with an unstable economy, this board and I understand there is no room for frivolous spending. I also want to welcome our newest Commissioner, Bill Hayden, and I look forward to his contributions to the board and the county. Lastly, it's not about what you say, it's about what you do. And if you think we did a lot in twenty twenty-two, you haven't seen nothing yet. Thank you again for coming. That's all I have. Moving on, thirteen is proclamations, there are none. So now we will, we'll go to fourteen, which is a public session from the floor. This public session is for questions or comments pertaining to the agenda items only. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. Please state your name, your municipality, and agenda topic. You can line up at the microphone if there's anybody out there that would like to speak about agenda topics only.
Motion?
I get a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley, I get a second.
Second?
Second, Commissioner Space. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Carries. Floor is yours.
Kevin Lindahl, Forty Congress Street, Bloomfield. I'm here on behalf of Bill Hayden. I'd like to give a shout-out to all the union workers in the back, the county workers. Power to the union! Power to the county workers, power to the people of Sussex County. We are in an economic turmoil right now. Inflation is at forty-year highs. Heating oil has reached a record high of five point nine-one dollars a gallon. The price of food in New Jersey is eight point seven percent above the national average. The average New Jersey family spends more than eleven thousand annually on groceries. This reduces disposable income, and it reduces disposable income, which means there are less people able to go to restaurants, to use our movie theaters, to shop at the local municipalities in Sussex County. And what that's gonna lead to is more businesses closing their doors, and those people are gonna have less disposable income now because they've just been laid off, which is gonna be a downward spiral, continuing downward economic spiral that we're seeing because of these high gas prices, high home heating costs, and this record inflation that we haven't seen in decades. The county workers deserve a raise. They deserve a good pay, they deserve a living wage, and Bill Hayden supports that, and he supported that even before he was sworn in tonight as Commissioner. You don't have any control over what the federal wage is. You have no control over the state wage, but you do, as Commissioners, have control over what these men and women get paid. And they deserve to get paid a living wage, and they deserve a raise. They prevent, they've saved lives in our blizzards, they've prevented people from losing their lives with the snow removal. They've paved our roads and kept our roads safe, and that alone has saved countless lives. They've saved people in our storms, and they've kept our parks usable by expanding the public parking and fixing the facility. parking and fixing the facilities when they're worn down so our county residents can use those parks. So our county workers, our union members and non-union members alike, they deserve a raise, and although you can't control the state or federal wages, we will hold you accountable on the pay rate our county workers make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there that would like to have a comment? Seeing none, motion to close?
Second.
Do I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, second. Commissioner Fantasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. Number 15 is approval of consent agenda. I will move A through O. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed a consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolution is and and will further the public's interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do now. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Space. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number 16 is appointments. We have two appointments. 16A is reapportment of William Joseph as official town crier for the County of Sussex for 2023. Can I get a motion to adopt 16A?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fantasia. That is a roll call vote. Can I get a roll call, please?
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Pass. 16B, appointment of Kerry Sylvester as Public Agency Compliance Officer in and for the County of Sussex for calendar year 2023 pursuant to Public Law 1975-C127. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, we second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Space. Roll call, please, for 16B.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number 17 is resolutions, there are none. Number 18 is awards of contract, chains, orders, bid. Again, there is also none. And number 19 is our second public session from the floor. Please note, everyone is asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Please state your name and your municipality. Can I get a motion to open the floor?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. The floor is open for anybody who wants to have any comments not pertaining to agenda. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the floor?
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fantasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carries. 20 is reminders, please visit the county website for all meeting dates and times at www.sussex nj.us. 21, your favorite part, is the adjournment. The time is 6:55 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. Everybody have a good night. There will be a gathering at O'Reilly's, which is downtown in Newton, if anybody wants to stop by and say hi. Thank you all.